We're going to review the Gribery to hire someone.
That's what I thought because I'd read in the minutes of this port of end that they had given their treasurer's or whatever you call their signature power until you found a new.
Says July first, they'll, just next Thursday to twenty sixth, they'll bring in front of the regional council, they'll prove that it doesn't run a state board in July. No, we talked about that the other day when I was down there.
Things advertised differently though and we kept thinking, how could they make the decision to give them a job before the research committee ever even talked about it? It's not kosher.
No, no, it was never, it was never even.
You mean that's the first thing, Phil, the juice leaf, that's not kosher?
No, you know me. But it isn't kosher, they shouldn't do that. Where's Tommy? He's in the four inch banquet.
I don't know, he may be taking a detour around that road too.
Well, he could. It's just downstairs.
He didn't call any, he said, well, enough for his.
Now, the banquet's probably lasting a little longer than what you thought it was gonna take. Once he moved, he was in charge, he got right into it.
Take a detour.
Well, you drive clear up and then all of a sudden the roads are closed and then you gotta turn back and turn.
He's used this excuse before.
Drive halfway around the town.
He uses this every day.
I tried to break some people, I think they just thought I was friendly. We're all here now in California, Misty will lead us in a pledge of belief. I'd like to call the meeting to order first. If they're all here and present, then Misty will now lead us in a pledge of belief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
I put that on there, I'd sent you some information earlier, just in case anybody had any follow up they needed or if they had any questions I wanted to send out. And I don't know if Carl wanted to discuss that or not.
Yeah, he didn't want to discuss it, did he?
No.
I was still waiting for that. You said you had that, where we were supposed to do the little things and the main things were there, I was still waiting on that, you haven't sent me yet.
Which is that, Phil?
Uh, when we were discussing what we were going to send down with our budget and I said, they never told us what we were supposed to do and what we were supposed to take out with the budget. You said you would send me a copy of it.
Oh, that was, that was what was in the minutes. That was the footnote at the bottom of the minutes last one.
Let me see, the footnote.
Uh, it should be on your minutes. It's on your minutes. The asterisk with footnote, that's what was taken out.
I know it says in the minutes.
Yeah, that was taken right out of the MOU.
I'm looking for that one.
Find it.
Not yet, I'll probably look around. Would you see it? I didn't get that. You said it was in the minutes.
No, this is, this is what I thought we voted on.
Oh, it is, but he said he put it in the minutes and I didn't see it in the minutes.
It's not in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. It's not in the minutes.
Yeah.
All I saw was that we had completely been with footnotes, but I didn't see anything in it. Uh, that's the attachment, the juice leaf, but that's not what he's talking about.
If you look at the bottom of the minutes from May twenty nine. And if you look up under budget, there's an asterisk after the first sentence. Budget with footnote.
Okay, hold on just a minute, I'm looking. I found the footnote, the state superintendent's footnote, but it doesn't say we were supposed to do the minor finances things and the major things is left to them. That's what I had to say.
That's, that's the language that's in the MOU.
No, it's not the language that was used up there and that's what I was looking for. That's the reason I said it wasn't there. Because I said I'd never received that, it had the language in it and it doesn't say that. It says the state superintendent's schools shall maintain control over the personnel actions of the county and all facilities include financials related to pursuant to the code eighteen two B. And it gives the other strategic plan to improve and develop an address finally, but it doesn't tell us what we're in charge of and that's what I was trying to find.
We spoke, what, two hours about this?
Yes.
And we came to the conclusion to pass this motion. The motion was ignored. Footnote had not addressed the motion and it's just more the same what we put up with for three years.
Well, Phil, what I indicated I'm going to do is put in the.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Minutes, what was in the MOU and that's exactly what's in the MOU.
Okay, why even discuss issues and pass motions if the board is completely aware?
Well, that wasn't the case.
Well, it was the case.
All I asked you was to tell me why I didn't see that and everybody said, oh yes, it was in there and it's still, I haven't seen it yet.
Let's move on, let's move on.
That's all I wanted, was the same.
Okay, well, let's move on then to item four on the agenda, board reports. Abe Reeser, I will have to report that I was not at the May fifteenth meeting, I was in Portland, Indiana trading gas engines. We will have minutes of that meeting available to us. Okay, this is Starky, Gilmer Calhoun Career Center.
Right, the Calhoun-Gilmer Administrative Council met May twentieth at eleven A M. This Kelly Gladstone is the principal at the Calhoun Middle High School, sub for the interim superintendent, which is Superintendent Dan Mintz. He, there is another superintendent now, I think he's Woodward, Mr. Blankenship. But the minutes were approved, Mr. Blankenship called the meeting to order as president and reports, we had an articulate credit edge summary and the integrity agreements are being updated with Glendale State and West Virginia Pierpoint. The West Virginia Pierpoint agreement is out of date along with mostly it, but Glendale State has a little. We have sixteen areas at Glendale State and ten at Pierpoint. We are hoping to get more than that with West Virginia University. Natural Resources Online, Criminal Justice, Robotics, Pro Start Health Occupation, just to name a few of the things that we have. We have a one little, I think I gave you this one, that gave all the Pierpoint and things, the ones that we've had, that they had. The number two was the current SBA project. We had eight contractors to bid May the eighth on the SBA project. Joyce Vandergoen from SBA and Dan Walmark is on schedule for the August first goals that they're going to discuss. Our water project with PSD, we're still hoping, it's still listed, and we're still hopeful that we can get that project. It's three miles to run a water from our county line to the center, which we need desperately. We're always in trouble with testing of water and that's what we needed for. Three was the math, English teaching, the career tech ed. And we were trying to get an English and math teacher and it has been posted, a discussion was held on the position. Mr. Sterns noted that Dr. Nish and Glendon Birch from the Malco County Center, Career Center, discussed a no credit for the first year, they don't want us to take a credit for this first year. That we need other articulated credits, different than the regular math and English they fill. The math would have two credits, math three and four, and the other would be English eleven and twelve. Kelly White's the principal, thought it may be a struggle for Calhoun to get this installed right at this time because they don't have the tech centers at work. Gilmore County High Schools does have the tech center at work and they're going to work on that. But Calhoun is thinking about literary design and math that plays in theirs, that they really need to get that put in. The state will offer in-service this summer and it is a non-negotiable thing, they have to be there. And we need to get our policies in line and we need to start writing in the next two weeks to get those policies in. This is why it's so noted that the basic will only assist in labs. In other words, our math and English teacher will go in and assist in the labs only for the first year before they start anything else. And we are hopeful that we get a math and English teacher, but you know, that's a little shaky. We need the embedded credit policies written up. Digital imaging is at the state level and robotics is for, needs to sign credits, at least three credits if we're going to do robotics. Some of you all saw the robotics down there and it's fantastic and the children love it. And we do remarkably well along the state beds. Jason Hughes is our state representative, he's a wonderful young man, he's just as nice as he can be. He recommended that the teachers need to take to watching the magnet schools in this career center. That way we focus on looking at what's on the ground now instead of waiting and going to it later. We had an L A A plan or local plan for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Mr. Stern presented this plan and we had just a minor change in it. But Mr. Armour has the copy of the plan, if anyone would like to discuss that and he will probably discuss it with you. He is replacing me tomorrow at ten o'clock at the career center because I can't go, it's my first time I've ever missed one. And under the new business, all financial matters were approved. The proposed budget for fiscal year fifteen, Mr. Minnie, he is their C S B O down at Calhoun. Calhoun does all of our work for us and we pay him three thousand dollars a year to do that, our statements and things. And his contract is up and Carl will tell you about the next time what they decided to do with it. And noted the center is financially secure. The budget was approved unanimously, however, the P E I A is down by hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. State aid is also down, but we are still in good shape down at the career center. That's something we have. The posting for personnel for the English and math job, Mr. Stern asked for extension of ten days just in case we don't have takers and he can extend it ten more days to get the English and math. We're getting closer and closer to school being out and the next school coming on. And the school calendars, Carl has one school calendar for Calhoun, one school calendar for Gilmore County. We accepted the Gilmore County one, Mr. Blankenship had already put it to the state. There was one section in it that I didn't like and that was the four days in March. I'm gonna let Mr. Blankenship explain that we did pass it with a provision of those things and he can explain to you what he's supposed to do with the O S days at the end of that.
I could look at your calendar. Are you asking about the.
There's provision, we passed this with a provision that the O S days at the end of March. We didn't like the four day week for children, we need five days. And because Calhoun's was different than ours, they wanted five days. They had different things that we did and they hadn't sent theirs yet to the state, we'd sent ours. They, we agreed to the Gilmore County calendar with a provision that those O S days would be converted to snow days at the end of the school year.
Well, not actually converted to snow days, Phil, the O S days will be converted to instructional days. In other words.
If they're not used.
Well, even if you don't use them. In other words, if we don't have any snow days, then they'll still be converted, there's still gonna be instructional days, so you still have five days of instruction.
Now, that's why I want him to explain it because we did have a problem with that.
Say that again, one more time, I was looking right at that.
The, all the O S days will be converted to instructional days even if not needed for snow days.
For snow days.
For climate weather.
So that will take care of the four days that she's.
Well, actually they'll all care, six of the O S days.
Six of the O S days.
And they're, they're in March and April.
That's the reason I want him to explain it to me because I was afraid I'd get it wrong.
So there's not gonna be four days in a school week in March, right? Okay, that's not a solution, really set us back if they're, they have that long of a standoff.
Yeah, well, probably what'll happen if we had the same bad weather we had this year, it's gonna be converted anyway. But we went ahead and said that regardless of whether they're needed for conversion or not, we're still gonna go ahead and convert it into like a structural day.
That's right. And we always have the option to alter the calendar too.
Yes.
Whether you've got any kids who're gals.
Yes.
Right, isn't that it?
Yeah, for each of, what you, what you actually do is when you, when you use those days, you take the days off the end of the year, so the kids will actually get off six days earlier than what's reflected on there.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I really picked up on, we had our meeting down there, was the set of data for work keys. When you go down there, does the group discuss that very much, the scores or work keys or?
Oh, my, yes.
Have you, before you leave us, could you tell us what's been identified as an opportunity for us to improve the score?
Well, each teacher goes together, I gave you a survey.
Right, you did.
That actually, Mr. Blankenship, remember the survey we got for each one of the teachers? And in that survey, you've got the survey, I gave it to you, where they tell how they're going to improve each, each one of the teachers are gonna improve. Not only do they do that, they go together and they make grants. Every one of the teachers have grants and then they come together as faculty and vote on which grant they're going to do. This way, with the new teacher in, we were afraid that if, none of these teachers have English and math, they're not English and math teachers, they're automotive people, they're different people like that and their fields are not that. We were afraid they're gonna say, hey, I don't know anything about this, you know. So what they did, they're going to help the math and English teacher and tell them what they think their students are going to need in the survey and they gave it. And then they'll turn around and the English and math teacher will go into the lab and they will help them do each one of those things. Isn't that your understanding of it?
Yes, that's part of it. The, the English and math person, people will actually be used to help better the scores. Help bring those students up in both the math and the reading areas.
Yeah, so they'll be integrated into the labs like she's talking about to offer.
Yeah, and more than likely they'll be, they'll be doing credit in most cases.
Is there anything we can do proactive to prepare the students better before they get into the center?
Oh, definitely at the high school.
Yeah, that's, that's my point too, is that if we're jumping into the middle of a, a problem that has already gone down the road too far, you can teach them to do basic math and English much earlier and you won't have that problem at the, at that level. So I think what it says to us is that we've got a problem, a systemic problem. It's not just the vocational center and those work for the school. And I'm talking to people who are hiring graduates of VOTEC centers and high schools and they say they can't do enough math, you know, to, to take blueprints and transfer that to metal or wood or whatever and they can't write a complete sentence. And they can't read the material. And that doesn't speak well for any of us. It's just not Gilmore County, it's throughout the state, which is.
Our problem here is, Mr. Simmons, is the fact that when our students from the Calhoun, and keep in mind, this is what I always say, these are our students down there. Whether they're Calhoun students or Gilmore students, they are our students. And that's the way our administrative council looks at it. We show no difference, we're not here to come back, you know, we're better in Calhoun, Calhoun's not as good as we are, so and so. These are our kids and we want them all to succeed and that's the way we look at it. But once those students are sent down to us in eleventh and twelfth grades and we have a sprinkling before that, these teachers assumed, and you know, you make an ass out of you and me if you break that word down, that they already know their English and math. Well, they went, that's our problem down there with word keys as Carl's talking about. Then we decided, at one time at the VOTEC school, we had English and math at the VOTEC school full. Then they decided, state decided, no, no, you didn't need that, we didn't have enough money, they took them out. Now we're just trying to get a little part time to help our students because hands on, they're magnificent. Our kids, they went, run every title that you come and going and, you know, and the Skills USA. They really do well, but they have this problem and that's the problem we're trying to take care of. So the survey that Carl will report on the next time for you, I did tonight for the residents for the tomorrow's meeting. And they'll discuss all of it down there and he can tell you what the teachers, they actually, the teachers did their own surveys of what they thought they could do to help each and every child. But our problem is that there should have this before they get down there and they don't have it before they get down there.
How many years have we known about this?
Oh, that's, that's just regular thing.
It's been going for years now?
Oh, it's going for years and years everywhere.
And we've known nothing about it?
The biggest problem that we have down there, our guidance counselors that come out of college or come out from anywhere, they don't have any training as career, you know, people to help the career center children to know what they're going to do. They have no training in it. The colleges, that's the biggest thing they need to take. So we started having little seminars with the guidance counselor saying, hey, this is what our kids have to have. But all that should be done at the college level, not, you know, here. They, those guidance counselors should come into each high school knowing that this is part of a high school counselor's job is to also go down to the career center and make sure the kids that are not going to be college bound are going to be the people that we need to help. They don't do that in college. We are very, very poor there. And that's something the state's going to have to take care of and maybe Reeser, but.
But when these kids, they'll get down there, fill us in the tenth grade.
Some of them.
My goodness.
Some of them.
Yeah, at that time, they should have had basic math and they should have enough reading skills, know how to write sentences and.
Mr. Raff.
You know, somewhere before the tenth, ninth, seventh, eighth grade, somewhere there were failures.
But you know, Tommy, this same thing happened when you, I had you in school and up there was kids in the class that did not have IQ and things that the other kids had. And no matter how hard you try, you're not going to change their IQ. So what we have to do is find hands on other ways in which to bring them into the workforce. And the other is that some of them are just not learning.
But Phil, as we go to these meetings that major executives kind of talk to us, they're talking about, can I correct, eighth and ninth grade level math and reading, that's what.
Sure, if you have a mastery of, of eighth grade math and if you can write and read on the eighth grade level, that takes most people through. You know, I, I have had seventh graders who were, Phil, like you're talking about, they did not have the ability to write sentences. And when I, I got the principal to agree, let me throw away the instruction manual and I taught them to read the newspaper, to read letters that they got, to respond to correspondence because they were not going, I would do adverbs all week long, on Friday they knew it. On Monday you come in and ask and there wasn't a soul in the room, knew what an adverb was.
I'm surprised.
And so that was really wasted time for us to spend that kind of time. And where they were going to live, they were gonna be getting correspondence, they were gonna be getting magazines and newspapers. And to be able to, to do with what they had is, is what we wound up doing. But I think we've got a broad group of students that we're not, we're not being difficult enough in our demands early on. And I know it's easier to give a student a higher grade than really what he earns because you don't get complaints about that. And we do that over and over and the student pays the penalty for it. Whether they go to the VOTEC center or whether they go on through high school or try to go to college or whatever.
I think the community would be absolutely outraged that those work keys tests succeed in some category in a sixty percent failure rate.
Well, give my hearing, look at them. The whole point is what I'm saying, mostly what they've been doing over the years and you know, I had been a special education teacher for years here at this high school. I tried to get them to the sixth grade level, reading the newspaper and stuff. They committed with the first grade reading, first grade. There's not much you can do, just get them as hard as you could go, no parties, we gotta learn type of thing. But what I'm saying to you is, most of the students that have in the past been sent to the VOTEC school are the students that weren't going to college, that didn't have the ability to do the work and so on. So now the career center is coming in and taking the better students. And now you're seeing the comparison between the better students and the students that their IQs are not up to that range. You're seeing the difference. You're always going to see that because everybody's different. We have poor children that don't have intelligence, we've got others, they're very highly intelligent. But in the past, they've never went to the VOTEC school. Now they're going to the VOTEC school.
I'll tell you, if we got kids that are looking far enough in the fans, a lot more of them are gonna go to the VOTEC.
That's what we're trying for right there. That's what we are after is getting all the students. We don't wanna leave these others behind, but we wanna make sure every child comes down there has the ability to do something, whether they have the ability, you know, they don't have ability to phobology, for instance. That's a new one we have, your daughter's there. I mean, we have kids like that now that we're so proud of and we're, we're winning. We're much better, we're for the smallest, we're the smallest VOTEC school in the state. Yet we win more USA skills medals than any other career center.
I know I've asked this before, but Phil, it's one of the things we talk about at the state level and it fits in with what you're saying, we want a seamless path from our vocational and technical centers through into the community and technical college system. Do you see that developing with the VOTEC?
They are developing at the VOTEC school, that very thing, the pathway, trying to get them brought in. And even those students that's falling behind and losing a credit, we're bringing them down there and finding a way to make that credit up and try to help them and bring them on that pathway and keep them and bring them with their own classes and things.
Do you have representatives from the community college that attend your advisory council meetings?
All the time. We have, you'd be surprised at the number. And we've got a fantastic staff down there, they just work like you wouldn't believe.
What's it gonna take for like, I know they're in the beginning stages of getting a lot of this. What's it gonna, is it gonna take money, grant money to get it launched? Is that, is it coming down to that?
It's coming down to the problem, we don't have any money in VOTEC schools. Thirty-seven thousand dollars and that's our donation and what we get from VOTEC and so on is all. We just don't have the money to get the people that we really actually need. Now, we just started the new natural resource and we need a lot more to get it started and so on. But the state only allows you so much money and we're a dual school trying, two small counties trying to make up money that we don't have. So we have to go with whatever the majority can take and things. But they're working terribly hard to do what they have to do. Anyway, in our general discussion, Mr. Stern reported that the lift in the auto lab failed inspection. Well, all of you know, you don't have an auto lab without a lift, you have to have one because it wasn't bolted down properly and it was old. So what happened there, they're trying to get a twenty thousand dollar grant from the state to replace the lift. Mr. Schneider, who is our automotive instructor, has applied for a twenty thousand dollar grant for a computerized scanner, which they need, they really need it. But because he needs the lift more, he has changed his grant and he was given the grant by the rest of the faculty, you know, they pushed this over and say this is more important. And he's going to now try to get his twenty thousand dollars for the lift that he has. Mr. Stern reported that the senior day and the awards day went great. Some of us were there, you couldn't have asked for better. Our meeting will be tomorrow at ten A M. And you, Mr. Darno, we'd love to have you, Carl's replacing me, first time in four years. But the folk festival's on, I've got my family coming, I can't make it there. So everybody's invited, they know they are and I hope that you'll come down and Carl's gonna take over.
I, I had a question there, the word replacement, no one can replace you, Phil.
That's what you're gonna do, Phil, you better do it.
Well, at the scene of your meeting, it will tell you that.
Mr. Blankenship, was there anything I missed?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, let's. Okay, well, let's move on then to new business. Item five and A, minutes, May nineteenth, May twenty-nine. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Point of order. I assume that I has a lack of motion. Hold on a second.
All right, B, budget supplements and transfers.
I, I moved that we approved the supplements and transfers that we are in charge of and that we, by the state board permission, can do. We were supposed to get a list so far, I haven't seen the list. Only that, then that way in my motion, please.
You've, you've heard Phyllis's motion, do we have a second to that motion?
You do.
Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Now, can we get that motion written down, kind of the past? We do it verbally, and then we don't see what we said.
You're approving that part of the supplements and transfers for which we have authority?
That's exactly correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right, C, accounts payable.
I noticed the budget this time, the information divided in two parts. One part is items for which checks have already been written, roughly sixteen grand, and then the other one is part checks to be written, and it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve, so we can get into discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, now, we have a motion, a second. Now, any further discussion on this item?
I have a question on accounts payable dated five twenty-eight fourteen. It was in that batch, it's fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twelve cents. That's the bulk batch, but one, the one in particular that I was looking at was six hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents, and the description said blanket purchase order. You know, in the past, that's something that the OPA had faulted us for, was blanket purchase orders in a description. It should, it should set out what the purchase order was for.
I can use it, too.
It's Singapore elementary, Amazon, and it totals six hundred and eighty-three seventy-seven. I would just ask that if the boys, pleasure report to approve that, that that we broke out with a description, because in the past, that has been something that, that we have been cited for, without a description.
Yes, we have.
And it's not a real instructional supplies.
It needs to be broken out as such. That, it needs to be broken out as such, that, I mean, blanket purchase order, you can buy a lot of things from Amazon, so it needs to be broken out.
Okay.
And since we're in discussion, I noticed one entry in there was for Williamson Schreiber for the high school. I just have a question, what's William and Schreiber going to the high school?
The wall.
That, that was something that I saw, was, did the insurance pay for that? What, what, did the truck hit the gym wall, or did it hit the classroom wall where the students were sitting?
The outside wall, and the students' insurance paid for it.
That's, we're talking about the gymnasium, it's gymnasium, I believe, and that's what was confusing.
It's the wall, the back wall here.
So it was the gymnasium that the truck hit, not the classroom?
No, it was the classroom.
It was a vocational one.
Vocational, yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that you're calling that the gym?
No, I didn't call it that.
But it was in there, it's a gym, that's reasonable.
Well, that's, it's that, and also, we, we're checking the structural integrity.
That's what I'm talking about, the structural integrity of the gym, the wall.
Yes.
Okay.
As a result of that impact, is that what it is?
No, there was a, there was a crack back there, we wanted to make sure that it was safe.
Oh, now, there we go. It wasn't resulting from the vehicle, that's what I was asking you.
It's actually two separate things.
Okay, we didn't know about the other one. Maybe I just didn't know about it. Maybe somebody else did.
When I see, you know, I've seen the last three years, many, many entries for Palmroy. And Mr. Blankenship sent information, said that Palmroy has a contract through the state or they're a recommended vendor.
Yes.
Do, is it absolutely required that we have to buy for Palmroy, or can we ask local business people to bid on? Just like one thing I'm looking at right here is vendor number nine one seven five two, there's Palmroy, and it's twenty-two eighty-four. Is it absolutely required that we have to deal with Palmroy, or can we go to local business people and say, could you change?
If you use, if you use your tools for schools money, which the state gives you, then it's got to be from the state contract, which is Palmroy.
Palmroy's not the only contractor they have, though. I got the impression that said Palmroy was it, only person, but it's not.
It is for most of your computers and things like that.
I know, but it isn't. There's IBM, there's others that you can go to for that, too.
Yes, but it has to be state contracted.
Because Palmroy's the one that put in all of our wiring, got it wrong, and, you know, it just bothers me that we have to continue to buy from them, because there's state, you know.
Okay, any more discussion on this particular agenda item? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Same thing.
Okay.
Same, same thing. Only those that we said yes.
Right, oh, yes, only those we have authority.
Okay. All right, motion passes then with the same speculation, only those items for which we have authority.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, D, policies for approval.
I just, I have a question, if I had, if we have to make a motion to discuss?
Let me, let me make a motion, I want some, and I've got a discussion to it. Motion for approval. Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion now of the motion?
These policies, when you sit down and try to go through them, they just almost overwhelm you. And my question, when I try to read them, and my attention span isn't very long when I deal with something like this, do we have any policies at all that are in variance with other counties? The reason I ask that question, if big counties that are highly successful like Maun, and they have the same policies, that would indicate to me, well, what works for Maun should work for here, and maybe we shouldn't spend hours and hours trying to digest everywhere. So do we have any policies that are in variance with any of the other counties that have good education systems?
Oh, yeah, as a matter of fact, the, you have one policy that came from, I think, Randolph County, the drug testing for, we were studying that for students. That's identical to the one that they had at Randolph County.
It would be really helpful to me if we were to flag the ones that are unique to this county.
I don't know if we do have any that's unique to this county, Carl.
That was my question.
Mr. Bailey actually wrote the policy matter for it.
Right.
And...
Yeah, that was my question.
Those have been out, and we've received very few comments. As a fact, I think you made comments, and I don't know if we've gotten any more comments on any of the policies we've had, or, or comment.
Well, I have, you know, I went and I made a conscious effort and, and to get through the whole entire list, but if I'm being completely honest with every board member here, I did not succeed in getting that done before tonight. And that's, that's just the honest-to-God truth.
No, I didn't.
Um, I got through by half of them, and in, in that half that I got through, I'm not saying that there isn't some really great policies here. A lot of them I had to read three times to fully digest, but there are some here that, 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 I don't, I don't know how we're going to be able to enforce part of these. Well, and there's some errors in some of them, and I, I know it could just be human error. You know, one policy, it's a formulation of policy, policy, says that you can review our policies on the Grant County website for ten days, they're posted. So there's little things like that that refer people to check our policies on the Grant County website, and so...
Maybe the new superintendent can go through there.
And so, and so, you know, little things like that, and that's just minor things, and that's just human error. And then, like, the discrimination of grievance procedure, there's a great deal of blanks, you know, when you're talking about where a grievance is to be filed, how is the procedure, there's a lot of fill-in-the-blanks. And I think, you know, policy, you know, you know...
That, that shouldn't have been on there, shouldn't have been anything like that.
Well, I ha, I have them here, and I'd be happy to share them with the ones that I've been able to get through.
If he would, if he would send them to us.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I was looking at policies right up to the minute I drove here. And then there's another policy with the elementary basketball and cheerleading program where it states that, you know, from what I'm reading, if I'm understanding it correctly, that the kids, if there is enough children to have basketball, well, they will have it at their individual schools, providing there's enough kids to make up a team, and it could be co-ed teams, and that they would not really have what you call regular scheduled basketball schedules, that they would play three Saturdays at the end of a clinical session, and that parents would be responsible for transportation to the clinicals and to tournaments and things like that. You know, that's going to rule out the biggest part of our role communities. You know, kids at Rosedale, you know, depend on that bus to be able to take them, to participate in, in games and tournaments. And, you know, our excess levy, the voters, the voters voted to support that excess levy.
Well, if they were to go outside the county, I'd say the reason, they still wouldn't just like cross that. What the, what the president's trying to do there is to eliminate a lot of the stuff that's going on now, and actually teach the children fundamentals.
Yeah, but we understand that's going to rule out a good portion of the kids that are able to participate. If there's a shortage of amount of kids at one school, the way the policy reads is, you know, if there's kids enough to form a team, that, that, that school will have a team. What if there's not? If there's not, then the closest area for them to come would probably be Glenville. How many kids is going to be able to participate in that?
We've, we've had it happen before. We've had times when we didn't have them, and they're put feet on the floor.
I've known, I've known teams to have teams ever since I've been in school, in elementary school, to have a team. I, I mean, I have never known, as long as we've had the elementary schools, for a team not to have a, a team. And it really bothers me, the fact that the policy is written in such a way, is that we're kind of overstepping what the voters have already approved to pay for. They, they help pay, their, their tax dollars pay for that excess levy, and we're saying we're no longer going to transport kids by way of bus, it's on the parents.